Yeah, I'm unmuted. Okay, I think we're all here, so do the salute to the plaque. I'd allegiance.
The flag.
For the United States of America. To the republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. Liberty. And justice for all. Roll call. Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Leahy.
Yeah.
Counselor Mercier.
Yeah.
You're on mute, yeah. Counselor Newt.
Yeah.
Counselor Roy.
Here.
Counselor Samaras.
Yeah.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
I present. I think you're unmuted now. Counselor Mercier, Memorial.
Here. Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, we'll do memorials, Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to offer a moment of silence in Daken Chamber for Leonard Len Tommy. He was the beloved husband of Catherine Tommy with whom he shared the last forty-eight years. He was raised in the Christian Hill neighborhood of Lowell and attended Saint Michael's School before graduating from Lowell High School. Since nineteen eighty-seven, Len was a longtime member of the Lowell Alliance Club where he held various positions, including council chairman. He was self, he was employed by Dennis Office Supply, Allied Office Supply, and retired from W.B. Mason in two thousand and eight. In addition to his wife Catherine, he is survived by his two daughters Kara and Erin. His two grandchildren Ashton and Xavier. He is also survived by his brother Ned Tommy of Lowell and Bill of Palheim, New Hampshire. Len was welcomed into heaven by his granddaughter Sydney and his brother, the late Thomas Tommy. We offer our sincere sympathy and condolence to his family, relatives, and many friends. And I'd like to also do a moment of silence in Daken Chamber for Edward J. Eddie Walsh, a well-known and loved local business owner and former city of Lowell commissioner of Public Works. Eddie was a longtime resident of the Highlands, and he was the loving husband for over forty-eight years of the late Rosemary Walsh. And the beloved longtime partner of Barbara Hager of Braken, who survives him. Eddie was a veteran of World War II. He proudly served his country as a member of the United States Navy. Growing up, he worked in his family's asphalt paving business and uncle's greenhouse. Eddie later joined his family at James Walsh and Sons Asphalt Paving, started by his late grandfather. Later in life, he remained the owner and operator for over forty years until his retirement in nineteen ninety-two. A highly respected businessman, Ed later joined the city of Lowell Department of Public Works as its commissioner, where he remained for over sixteen years until his retirement in two thousand and eight. Although kind and genuine, his name was synonymous with the expression "great guy." He was a past director and honorary member of Mount Pleasant Golf Club. He was also a former member and past director and past president of Vespa Country Club and was an over thirty-year cooperator of the Lowell Fisance Savings Bank. Besides his partner Barbara, he is survived by his daughter Deirdre Cahill, his granddaughter Caitlin, three stepchildren. He was also the father of the late Edward J. Walsh III. He will be truly missed. And lastly, if I could say, I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Daken Chamber for all those who have passed away since our last council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other memorials? I just, sure, Counselor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to request a moment of silence in Daken Chamber for Nisa Lee, whom I am honored to call a friend. Nisa Lee was a former resident of Lowell and a business owner in Lowell for many years. Nisa Lee, beloved husband, father, and grandfather, passed away unexpectedly on August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty after battling cancer. Nisa was born on December ninth, nineteen sixty, in Phnom Penh, Cambodia. He survived the Cambodian killing field but was separated from his family when he immigrated to the United States. As a young immigrant alone in the United States, Nisa overcame many challenges and obstacles to become a prominent figure in the Khmer community. He worked tirelessly to make a better life for himself and reunited his family after having separated for nearly ten years. He is known in the community for helping Cambodian refugees adapt their lives in America and navigate complex social services and immigration systems. Nisa was deceased by his son Nathan, who served in the U.S. Navy and passed away in two thousand and thirteen. Nisa is survived by his wife Sonnamoran Gao and his five loving children. His children are Sonnamora Nisa and husband Chung Nam. Ravi Ball Nisa, a staff sergeant in the U.S. Army, and wife Sokha Delise Nisa. Daughter Lolita Nisa Ra and her husband Seri Ra. Molinda Nisa and her husband Buntyun Ho and Stephen Nisa and his wife Holika So. In addition, he is survived by his brother Gosal Gao and his wife Darlene Uk. Nisa leaves behind eleven grandchildren and nieces and nephews. They were truly the love of his life. The family would also like to extend appreciation to the mayor, John Leahy, for presenting the posthumous citation at the funeral last week. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to offer a moment of silence for William Wilson. Bill was, excuse me, Bill was the husband of Laura Wilson. Bill was educated in Lowell Public Schools, had a wonderful career with Verizon. He is the father of Laurie Gueye, was employed by the city of Lowell as a school nurse. We can have a moment of silence. Thank you. And the mayor's business communication, remote participation, motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Chow, seconded by Counselor Newt. City clerk business minutes of the zoning subcommittee on August twenty-fifth and approval of the city council meeting August twenty-fifth. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Samaras, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater. Get into the, being not seven o'clock, we begin the communications from the manager. Motion A response Monument Committee actions, Counselor Samaras.
Thank you. I appreciate the work that was done with this. This one thing, there's been a lot of confusion over the years as to what we can do and not do. And sometimes people in the committee don't have a chance to understand what rights they have and what they can do to establish a monument. So this is a well illustrated report. But the city manager or someone, just give a general overview, what this report entails for the public.
If I can just, Counselor Samaras, I know you unmuted, but you also took your picture off if you're unaware, so.
I didn't do that. That's probably the best thing I did.
Okay, all right. Please continue whoever wanted to.
I asked the city manager if she could give a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. This, this response addresses two separate motions, one by Counselor Samaras, one by Counselor Mercier. Craig Thomas, who I know is on, who has worked closely with the Monument Committee. Craig, if you can summarize the work of the Monument Committee so far.
Yes, thank you, Madam Manager, through you and the mayor to the city council. Really happy to bring forward these two motion responses on the Monument, many one on the interim guidelines that we're proposing, as well as a response to the request for Michael Sullivan's plaque in Centerville. I know everyone's aware the Monument Committee has been working for some time to get guidelines in place. And I think we're all aware about how difficult it is to wrap our arms around, you know, centralizing the review for monuments across the city. And these interim guidelines are a first step in that process. But it is why we've called them interim at the request of the committee. They're focused on a few topics that are, we think will be really helpful for folks to understand moving forward. You know, very basic things, or what are monuments and what's in the purview of the Monument Committee, as well as the process, things coming to the committee will come through the council. And then getting into the, the details of JFK Plaza in particular, and some of the design standards around some of the more common requests that we've got, both around park benches and memorials. We're trying to set up processes that are clear and available for folks to start to learn about, as well as to be sort of a living document as we learn more about this. Again, this is why we're calling them interim guidelines as a start. And we hope the counselors will find these to be in line with their understanding of the committee. And I'm happy to report that Steve Stole is the new chairman, after Henry Marchand, the original longtime chairman, or the most recent earlier chairman resigned as a part of his resignation from the city of the summer. As a part of this, we set the guidelines to then enable us to take action on the Michael Sullivan request from Counselor Mercier. So we've initiated a comment period so that we can gather information and do research about the individuals proposed for monuments, then a final report and recommendation through the committee. And in the case of parks that go to the border parks. I don't know if there are any questions about that or about the interim guidelines that were distributed.
But I personally want to thank you for, you know, developing these guidelines. We have had this type of information. All of us have a different idea of some of these situations. But now this is a good working document that will allow us to really show everybody in the community that we can do this and we can do it in a fair manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mercier.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me say that this is a great response to this very issue. I'm very pleased with it, very detailed, a lot of work went into this. From what I see here, this is a memorial bench policy and memorial stones. But do we have a park naming policy? Because I don't see anything about that in here. Do we have anything like that?
So Counselor, you should have, it was not included in the packet, but was, should have been delivered today, some other guidelines. Craig, if you can address that, you, there were other guidelines having to do with naming?
Yes, thank you.
It wasn't, it wasn't in your original packet, Counselor, but it was, it was overlooked, and I believe it was delivered with budget package or should have been today.
Thank you, Madam Manager, and our apologies for that oversight. Yes, the, there are pieces in here that we need to start to understand. You know, there are the naming of some buildings, some parks, some other kinds of facilities that remain a partially open question. We continue to work with the committee to understand, you know, the right pathway, as well as, you know, how we'll work again with the border parks and others. But this is one that we'll continue in our next meeting to debate the right processes and procedures. We don't have it all done yet, which is why, again, we're starting with interim guidelines. But we felt the need to sort of start somewhere with what we know and what we can move forward on, especially to address the most common requests we're seeing, which you see for the bench, memorial benches and plaques like the Michael Sullivan proposal. And that we're moving forward, looking at some of these other items, because this, over time, we anticipate being developed into quite a lengthy set of guidelines, as well as policies and procedures around a few more complicated naming options. So I hope Counselor Mercier, that answered your question, and I answered it by saying that we're still working on it, but it is one of the items that remains in our focus for our coming meetings.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I don't, I don't know what happened in the picture, but I'm here just to say, and I'm very, I'm very grateful for what I see here, and I'm glad that they're working on the Michael Sullivan memorial, some sort of a plaque or something at the park, because he had been a coach there for many, many years. I also appeared before the Board of Parks, and they were asking me to send them some guidelines that, with respect to the parks naming. And I didn't have anything, so I'm asking through a motion for a request, can you, someone send this whole package that we got with the monument stones, as well as the parks naming to the Board of Parks? I know John Lennahan is the chair. He asked me to do that, but I don't know how to reach them. I don't know where their office is. So if someone could do that for me, just so I could keep my word, I told them I would get it. So I would appreciate if someone could do that. Thank you.
We will do that, Counselor. We'll make sure that the, all the members of the Board of Parks, that we deliver the package to them as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Newt, and then Counselor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand this is an interim guideline that you monument and all, and all, I'm sure that the guideline for the park and the public building is the same. So the question is, where is the public input in this? And when can the public input into some of this guideline that, you know, has been either interim or is a working in progress?
Craig.
I'm sorry, I had a little bit of trouble hearing the question.
Yes, the, I know that the interim guideline that got to the, you know, the monument and all that has been in place. And I know that there's a working around the guideline for pack and building. So when, when and where is the public input into some of this guideline before it comes into a, you know, the document that we, we rely to, lean to, or rely on?
Yeah, so the Monument Committee has had a few conversations in public meetings about this guideline, these guidelines. All of the meetings are public, although, you know, it's harder to get participation during remote meet, this remote meeting period during the pandemic. We've submitted this as quickly as we can. We've been talking in the past with the Board of Parks. We'll continue to have our meetings and disseminate information as widely as we can. And then, and we're still learning as we go, you know, starting up a new committee. We'll take any and all feedback here in any ways. You'll see in the motion response, we set up a generic city email, that's monuments@loolma.gov. There are several city staff members on the committee, and so we have access to that email account. We'll take all this feedback in as we continue to develop and update the guidelines.
Thank, thank you. I would also encourage that, you know, going forward, the public meeting on this, as, you know, put out there so that the, the public, you know, for those who want to give input into this guideline, you know, have some, you know, input into it. You know, we don't want them to come afterward and say, I didn't have anything to do, but I know it's a lot of work we've done into this and appreciate very much. I just want to, you know, also, those out there who want to give input, opportunity for them to provide that input as we are working on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Craig, for the report. It's very interesting. I just have a quick question. I noticed there's a couple monument and presentation here that are missing identification. I'm just wondering how those ID were missing, that were they outdated, vandalism, somebody take them? And any plans to replace this ID, this identification for these two monuments?
If I can, through you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Counselor Chow. Actually, in the very brief period since the agenda or the packet was published in this meeting, had a few citizens reach out with the proper identification to those monuments. One was due to a missing plaque, which is the Italian Americans Monument, and one is a piece of artillery from a previous war that we had, making sure we had the right identification, both from the era, as well as the, how it came to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, thank you. Motion response, Dutton Street Soil Stockpile, Counselor Mercier. Any questions on that one?
I'm sorry. I want to thank you very much, Madam Manager and Diane Trad, for putting this report together. This answers my concern and that, and that of the concern of some of the public that asked me to find out what was happening there, for the sake of the people that are watching this evening, if in fact there are anybody. I really don't know, but it's just a stockpile. It's required for the protection of cars in the parking lot. It is also a stockpile because the option does not, so the option does not impact the construction timeline. And the city's extensive work in the area around the garage, there's no location to store the soil, but that's a good spot because it will not interfere with any other construction. So that's all I just wanted to know, at the request of people that had asked me. So thank you very much for the report.
Thank you. And you'll be glad to know that I saw our friend Jeff Thomas there overseeing the whole project, so it was in good hands.
Okay, good.
There we go. Motion response C, Sci-Fi Network, Counselor Samaras or Counselor Newt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to citizens of Conos and as well as Commissioner Clancy, and of course, Madam Managers for the report. I would, I would like to, you know, see if we can refer this to the Technology and Utilities Subcommittee, and if we have some meeting and to discuss this further.
Sure, I can motion.
Yeah, you can put a motion, refer technology.
Okay, yeah, counsel, thank you. Counselor Samaras, any questions? Seconded by Counselor Samaras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You're on mute, Bill. Counselor Samaras, you're on mute. Yeah, there you go.
Okay, here we go. Thank you. Great night today. Counselor Newt addressed the issue in a sense of, we should bring it before the subcommittee. But a question I have also is, in helping us get more information, I'd like to know if Comcast or Verizon can also be part of this process. I mean, because technology is changing as we talk, as we're talking right here and now. And sci-fi may have an answer, may not have, but we have Verizon and Comcast in the city. So I'd like to know, Madam Managers, through you, if some, if other information can be provided to us at other alternative sources. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Newt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, you know, to address Counselor Samaras' point that when we set up our first subcommittee meeting, we should also invite, you know, Verizon to come in and to see what it can help in terms of, you know, having, providing, you know, Wi-Fi for the city possible. That's the alternative to the sci-fi, you know, the work in progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion response D, reopening plans at academic institutions, Counselor Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would, I'd like to thank the city manager for this report. I think it's extremely important. We've talked about it numerous times, the fact that the city of Lowell is, one of its strengths is the fact that we have great partners. And some of those partners are educational partners, the Lowell Public Schools, Middlesex Community College, and UMass Lowell. So I think under these very, very difficult times, I, I think it was important for us to reach out, to let them know that we're here to support them, because I think it's extremely important. If you take a look, for example, you take a look, we have about sixteen thousand students in our school system, in the Lowell Public Schools, plus the staff. On total staff, it brings it up to almost twenty, and then you add in the University of Middlesex. About fifty thousand individuals, students and staff, that are circulating through an educational institution for at least nine months out of the year. uh, for at least nine months out of the year. So, uh, again, I, I'm, I know that the City Council, uh, has been supportive of the educational system. And, uh, I just wanted to, um, reiterate the fact that, that we are here to help out in, in any way that we possibly can. And I know that, uh, the city management is working very hard, uh, especially in the Lowell Public Schools, working with, uh, the administration. And I also want to congratulate the Commissioner Christine Clancy, uh, for her work. Because, you know, when we look back, uh, the, the public schools, there hasn't been, Lowell Public Schools, there hasn't been a lot done in recent times. And I think that with the city manager, and I certainly applaud her and her, uh, her staff have, um, have tackled what a problem that, uh, city managers have put aside for a number of years. So again, I congratulate, uh, um, the city manager on that. Uh, also, um, I think that, um, if the city manager would like to add anything to, uh, into this report, I know you're going to be going into, uh, more detail about the Lowell Public Schools itself. Do you have anything that you would want to add or emphasize to the, to the public in this, in this regard? And I know this is a, a work in progress, needless to say.
Uh, thank you, um, Councilor, and through, uh, Mr. Mayor, through you, to the, to the Council. Uh, we do have an update. As you do know, the work going on, in the reopening of the Lowell Public Schools has been ongoing all summer. Uh, Commissioner Clancy has been hard at work, as has the DPW staff. And I want to take a moment to, um, give credit to Commissioner Clancy, to her whole staff, and to our lands and buildings and DPW staff. They have been working unbelievably hard, uh, on this project. Uh, and I, I do want to give them credit, you know, hundreds of overtime hours have been put in to make sure we're ready for school reopening, which right now is scheduled for September seventeenth. Uh, we feel that the buildings will be ready. We've been working nonstop with the school department to, to make sure. As I reported here before, we're following the mandates of DESI as far as, uh, what they are suggesting we should, their guidelines that DESI has provided for school reopenings in and around ventilation and air circulation. And so, um, it's really important that, uh, we are following those. And I just want to touch on a couple of highlights, and if anyone has questions, I know Commissioner Clancy is here to answer those. Um, I, I just want to let the Council know the amount of time and money that we have spent. We have dedicated, so far to date, over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars spent on parts, replacements, materials, contractors, filters, air purifiers, all part of the reopening effort. Fortunate, uh, and, and, uh, then, uh, on top of that, we have additional costs totaling at close to eight hundred thousand dollars in all. I think I'm getting these numbers right, and I'll refer to Christine Clancy uh, when I'm through, but let me just tell you where we stand. One of the important things, rooftop exhaust fans, as we reported, those are important to bringing outdoor air inside the buildings and circulating. When we started this process earlier in the summer, it was probably twenty-five percent, maybe thirty-five percent of those were actually working throughout the schools. Over four hundred and fifty of rooftop vents, and these are big structures on our schools. Working, uh, nonstop, uh, we have now, I, I know this morning was seventy-five percent are all working. They've been replaced or repaired. Uh, and we have this week and next that we expect all of them should be finished and, and working. Parts have been ordered for all of these, and this has been a Herculean task. And, and we have a list of those schools that are a hundred percent operational. I won't go through every single one, but I'm happy to provide it to the Council. We'll make sure the school committee knows, and I want to make sure parents and staff and students know, um, that we are doing everything to make sure everything is operational. So, um, we've made tremendous progress on these rooftop exhaust vents and fans. We've also, uh, Christine Clancy has been going through, walking through classrooms with custodians. We've worked on windows, making sure windows are operational. That has been, again, a Herculean task. Something recommended by DESI. We ordered, as we talked here before, that the Council approved and paid for, Pepa air purifiers, one thousand of them. We've accepted delivery of two hundred and fifty. The rest are due this week, and that would be for every classroom. Let me just repeat. What DESI says you should do is try and maximize air circulation, have the vents working if you can. Make sure windows can be open if you can't have the vents working. And if you can't do any of those, it's certainly a good practice to have these air purifiers. They are the gold standard of removing anything. Uh, they are state of the art. So we've, we're doing all of that, all three of those in, in here. And then the other, um, item I wanted to address was, um, we have contracted for a third party to assess our HVAC system. This was back in July, uh, who has gone through, these are engineers who've gone through every building of ours. Uh, we have received a draft, we're reviewing the draft of that, which is looking at our buildings and then looking at the standards as required by DESI and where we stand on all of those, and we're very confident that we meet all of those standards. And so, again, work in progress, uh, the guys have been working nonstop. Uh, and, and will continue through this. They worked the weekend, they worked Labor Day weekend. I mean, there's no pun intended, but they were laboring very hard over Labor Day weekend to get this stuff done. And so, we, uh, also are beginning this week of building flush out, something else DESI recommends, bringing in fresh air, uh, having the vents all open, the windows, et cetera. We're following every step that they have recommended. We're also doing other things in the schools, many other things, um, including, you know, as DESI has required, bagging the, uh, water fountains so they are not used because DESI doesn't want us to use those. And, uh, all of the other projects are ongoing. The, uh, HVAC, the new boilers and roofs at the Bailey, the Daly, the Greenhills, McCallif, the Roger Stem and the Sullivan School, um, all of that work has been ongoing all summer and will be, um, ready for the season. So, uh, fire escape repairs have been going on, waterproofing at the Moody, Malloy, Greenhouse, Cardinal O'Connell and Washington Schools. So, you know, we had, um, there's just been a enormous effort. And, uh, again, I'm happy to provide the fine detail here. But, uh, I, again, I want to credit Christine Clancy because, uh, her attention to detail here has just been second to none. And, uh, I think everybody can be very proud of the work that the, uh, DPW has done to get these schools ready for the kids and, and the staff, uh, and when school is, is opening. So again, we, we believe schools opening on the seventeenth, uh, we believe will be ready. Uh, if, for some reason, let me also just jump in and say, uh, the school department is telling us what classrooms they intend to use. I think now that principals are in the schools, they're indicating which classrooms. Uh, we're going through each of those classrooms to make sure that they're ready. Um, not just in terms of the classroom, you know, in terms of the operation of the vents, the windows, but also the roof vents in, to those classrooms, as well as places like bathrooms and other areas. Uh, we're still waiting, I think, uh, for more information on some of the schools from the school department. But once we have it, we make sure that we are coordinating what we're doing with the list of rooms that they intend to use. So Christine, uh, if you want to address, uh, I know this has been a nonstop for you, but I may have skipped.
So no, thank you, Manager Donahue, just to add, I think that's a, a great overview. Really credit to lands and buildings, they have worked. I mean, we're talking seven days a week, um, long days and working into the night, weekends. Um, and so just to go back to some of those, uh, figures that we reported, what we looked at is just total amount of hours. We're talking about thirty-six hundred hours that DPW staff has put on all these buildings, these thirty school buildings this summer, um, and then including overtime hours. That, just in terms of value of those hours, that's approximately a hundred fifty thousand dollars in labor cost. And we are tracking that because some of that is eligible, potentially eligible as it's related to COVID, as a, under the CARES Act. So that combined with the six hundred fifty thousand dollars that we've spent on parts, uh, you know, whether it be, uh, parts, motors, fans, different materials throughout the schools, and these are all related really to ventilation, HVAC, service contractors, filters, air purifiers. That amounts to with a hundred fifty thousand dollars and the six hundred fifty thousand dollars, eight hundred thousand dollars, of which we're estimating is five hundred and seventy thousand dollars is potentially eligible through CARES. And that's something we're tracking closely with, uh, with our Chief Financial Officer, Connor Baldwin. So that, I mean, this really is the amount of money we're putting to the schools is very significant. I think more so than we've, at least since I have been here, we've ever done. Um, and it's really, you know, this is an opportunity for us to, to really fix our schools. And we're looking at optimizing the ventilation in all thirty buildings. Um, I think this is another item, just to kind of highlight is, so there's a, looking at the whole readiness of a building. But I think it's important to go into that classroom, into that bathroom, and checking to see that the fans actually work, the windows, at least one's operational, but we tried some more. So my, I myself and Deputy Director Alex McGee, we're walking them ourselves, not giving that to someone else. I'm walking it myself with a custodian, custodians opening the window because they probably will be the ones opening the windows in the morning and at night. And so we're checking every single classroom that's on that list that the school department has identified. Um, and if something is, is not, doesn't, let's say, and we can't go into a classroom and a window can't open, we mark that as this, this window is unopenable, um, needs to be repaired. And then that, that school, that classroom is not ready until we make that repair. And we take these notes and we try to then prioritize those repairs with our lands and buildings department. Think that, I think in terms of, I think, Manager, you really highlighted all the other, uh, components of, I mean, we're, we're working, it's really all, all, I would say, all of lands and buildings is focused on, on the schools this week, next week, and has been in the recent weeks. Any questions?
Thank you, Council, sure, Council Conway?
Yeah, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor. Again, that's a great, um, Christine, that's a great report. I know that one of the, one of the issues that, uh, that we've had in the buildings, and I know a lot of teachers have talked about it, uh, and you just touched on it, the windows. It seems as though there are a number of windows that, that were not able to be opened. And, and I hope that, you know, as you mentioned, and I think the city manager mentioned it too, is that the, uh, circulation of air is extremely important. So, yeah, that's, you know, it certainly is incumbent on us that we make sure that, uh, that all these windows are in working order. And, uh, and also the bathrooms too. Uh, that was another issue that I know teachers, uh, expressed to me that, uh, many of these, not many, but there were a number of bathrooms that, that were not in working order. So I'm glad that, you know, that you're going in and checking firsthand uh, so that we can get, we can get these, um, marked and repaired. So again, thank you very, very much for that report. Appreciate it and all the hard work.
Sure. Uh, Council Rourke, then Council Noon, and then Council Mercy. Council Rourke?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just want to appreciate Madam Manager, uh, with the report. I know you said you don't want to get into it, but can you go through the schools quickly that are a hundred percent compliant this time, please?
Sure. Christine, do you have an updated list from today?
Sure, I have a list.
Today, so I don't know what happened during the day.
I have a list, and I guess when you say hundred, we're really focused on the exhaust fans. So we're, we're still doing building flush out for all these schools. But in terms of exhaust fans, that really is a critical component. So I'm going to list a lot, and then these are a hundred percent. There's a number others where I was ready to put on the list that are, you know, one or two fans remain. This is just a list of a hundred percent as of today. The Laura Lee, the Lincoln, the Lowell High Freshman Academy, Mc Avenue, the Mc Q, Rivers, or the Bridge, Bridge Academy, Malloy, the Moody, the Maury, the Riley. There's also the Wang in the Washington. It's about ten or eleven schools. But then there's another ten, eleven, ten or eleven schools that are right behind that, that have one, two, three fans. Um, and also we're looking to see where those fans are. Some of those, I mean, they're in the locker room. We're getting everything, but we're also prioritizing those fans over bathrooms and over classrooms right now. Um, and then behind that, we, we, I think a big part of this is ordering parts. So we've gone, it's important that we've gone through all the fans and ordered parts. There has been somewhat, I think, everyone in the state and even countries trying to order these parts. So there has been a little bit of a delay, um, in getting parts. But we're, right as those parts came in, we're putting people on the roof to install those, those parts.
Awesome, thank you. So Madam Manager, the biggest, you know, so-called complaint, um, is, is your exhaust, right? And the city is taking care of ten, eleven right now, and probably the next week or so, another ten or eleven will be taken care of. Is that, is that a good prediction?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and actually, we're, we're pretty confident that by the seventeenth, we should be pretty much up to almost a hundred percent. Is that fair to say, Christine?
Yeah, I'd say that's fair to say, and that's if we get down to that last few schools that are a problem. And I wouldn't say problem, because there's always troubleshooting a couple of schools, where if there's a, those fans, if those fans are connected to cafeteria or gym, wherever those are, we just won't open those areas. But, um, we, we're trying, our goal is a hundred percent of all fans in all class, in all schools by the seventeenth.
And I think it should be noted that when we started this, as I said, we probably had about twenty-five percent of these fans actually working in some areas. Less, some schools had even less. So this is a tremendous improvement over what was there before, even pre-COVID.
And then last time, last report we had, I think it was ninety-four percent of, uh, windows were operable. Um, is there any update, is it just, just for a number, um, of where we're at?
So, yeah, we're not tracking by that percentage because I would have to say that the, what is operable varies person to person. So when I go into a room, if I open a window, I say, you know what, this really needs more of a repair. I'm going to say this isn't really operable, whereas the custodian says, I have no problem, open it. So what I have tasked is the custodian, and actually one school, the principal, he said, I'm the one that's going to be opening the windows every morning. It, him and his custodial staff. So it's, I guess, we kind of, the test hasn't passed with the whoever, so it's usually the custodian, but there's some, in some cases, principals. So what we're doing is by a classroom basis, but I would say that when we go into these classrooms, almost all of them have, um, mo- majority of them have windows working. And then there's very few that have zero windows working, so we're focused on those. And so it's, what I'm seeing is there's definitely some ballast repairs needed. So we've been ordering ballast for those repairs. But there's a couple, um, schools that, I don't know if it's just overtime, the building settled, the windows are a little warped. So they're difficult to open. We've greased them, they're just, they're difficult. So, um, there will still be some that are difficult, but if the custodian can open it and, and they signed off on it, that it is something that can be opened day, every day, that, um, and closed at the end of each day, then, then we're checking that it is operable.
Great, uh, thank you. Madam Manager, if possible, I know you're going to send this over to the, the school department um, and the superintendent. You know, if you could also send this, um, you know, to the UTL, I think that would hopefully be helpful as well. Um, you know, it's, it's, uh, you would hope that everybody involved is working as hard as the city is in, uh, getting, um, the schools ready for kids to go back in school. Uh, obviously, it's not the case, um, so hopefully if the UTL gets this letter, they'll feel a little bit better, uh, about hopefully getting kids back where they belong in access school. Thank you.
We'll send that.
Thank you, Council Noon, and then Council Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council, Council Conway, for this motion and the report from, you know, Commissioner Clancy and the land and building and DPW staff, and of course, Madam Manager. You know, it's now's the time for really patient and courage. There's much uncertainty surrounding, you know, how the school reopening is going to be. But I believe that educating in a manner that is safe for students and staff is a priority. And all the plans is offered a choice between remote and in-person learning, particularly for Lowell Public School. You know, this choice, you know, is set by the Madam Managers that, you know, it's guided by DESI, which is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, as well as guided by the latest state of Massachusetts, how that data with input from, of course, our expert in public, you know, health, um, you know, Director Valancher. You know, I'd say, you know, I also know that teachers and administrator from Lowell Public School are committed to making sure that this works. But of course, COVID present and But of course, COVID present and really ever-changing flu situation. So, so there's no model to work from, and I'm glad that you're working on some of this concern around the fan, around the window, around the ventilation, and so on. If I could ask Commissioner Clancy, provide us update. I know that you just highlighted some of the 100% school that, that met that, you know, fan and exhaustion, you know, and you're working to complete that before September 17 or 16. Could you also do this for us, you know, and provide us with the report that you just highlighted? And maybe update us with this, with that report, either the fan exhaustion or window, as well as, as Counselor Rourke indicated, send it also to the, the teacher union, as well as, you know, you know, whoever involved in this so that they know the work. I mean, we know, I know, and the council know the work that you've done, and the city manager have done. And I know the school department have done the same thing. I know it's a lot of frustration, a lot of anxiety, a lot of parents, of course. I mean, look, you know, people worry, you know, and, and, and I understand that. But I also understand that the staff, particularly you, Commissioner Clancy's, and, and DPW staff, and all the staff in the school department are doing their very best with, you know, the information that changed daily and provide that to parents so that they understand what's going on. So please share that, give us an update on that report that you just spoke on, that some of those school that 100% and some of the school that eventually is going to meet that 100% and window and whatnot, and so, and share too, because we got bombarded with, you know, because rightfully so, because they frustrated some of the parents and educators about, you know, their, 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 their children. So please share that with us. And again, thank you, thank you for the report, and thank you for your work, and, and the staff of your DPWs, and, and, and of course, the, the school educators, the administrator, the district, the district directors, and Madam Manager. Thank you. And of course, I know that the mayor is working hard on the other end with the department. I thank you too, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mercer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager, I'm just a little bit curious. Can any of this work be applied to maintenance of effort?
We're hopeful that, you know, I, Connor Baldwin, we had a conversation about this. I believe much of it will be considered maintenance of effort. I'm not so sure in terms of the CARES money, but we're going to stay tuned. Certainly, a chunk of this is going to be maintenance of effort. But because the CARES money is still yet to be determined how they're going to calculate that, we'll, we'll explore that. So we don't have a definite answer yet.
But when you do, could you let us know?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Counselor Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Manager, I want to thank you for this report. This was a good motion, and it really did provide information that parents and teachers want regarding, you know, sending their children back to their schools. But I also, at the same time, had a motion in to talk about sanitation, sanitation, I'm getting, they were saying sanitizing the school. And that's a weekly effort, or at least. And I'd like to make sure that we have that information as to what the school plans are doing, on how they'll sanitize the schools, what actions they'll take, you know, basically the process. Because this is a complete motion about the mechanics of the building. Now, we also have the issue is what will custodians be doing? You know, it, it, it's something that, as Counselor Rourke said, we want our children back in school. But the teachers have been fearful about going back to work. Parents are fearful of sending their children back to school. So the thing is, it's these type of efforts that will allow good things to happen. So thank you, Madam Manager.
We, we did send your motion, Counselor Samaras, to the school department. We'll follow up with them.
Thank you.
On the response.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? To Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to you, Madam Manager, Commissioner Clancy, and to all the city employees that have been putting in hours over the summer to, to get this work done. Just a quick question, going back to something I believe you had mentioned, Madam Manager, in your report. I believe you had referred to a, a report that was being drafted by the, the third-party firm.
Yes.
In, I think it was in draft form. Is that something that's going to be made public prior to the, the start of schools for the, you know, the council to review and for the public to view as well?
Yeah, I believe once it's finalized, we'll certainly make that, that will be given to the council as well as to, you know, the school department and, and all concerned. And, and essentially, it's, you know, a thorough investigation and report from a third-party engineer, engineering firm on the standards that's set forth by DESI and how our buildings shape up according to that. And recommendations.
Thank you. All set, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, thank you. I just, I just want to update everybody. I mean, appreciate all the work, like we've said, on this motion response from the city manager, from Christine Clancy's office, and from all the motions we've put in. But just want to let you know that there still is no agreement between the UTL and the school department. This, still haven't agreed on anything as of today. It's my understanding they're meeting tomorrow and Thursday again. So until we can agree on this third-party report, who knows if we'll be back into the building? So we'll keep everybody updated on what's happening. So I appreciate the effort. Being up to seven o'clock, we'll go to the general public hearing and then back into the communications. So again, ordinance to amend Chapter 150. Mission, let's say, given the second reading, Conlock, Massachusetts, City of Law and City Council ordinance, an ordinance amending the City Code of Ordinances, City of Law, Massachusetts, within respect to Chapter 150, therefore entitled fees, by amending certain sections. So I'll open the meeting to all those in favor. All those in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Anybody in opposition? Opposition? Anybody in opposition? That part of the, the hearing is closed. They need a motion to adopt by Counselor Samaras, segmented by Counselor Noon. Roll call. Counselor Elliott?
Can I ask you a question? Are these under public hearings, or am I?
This is a public hearing. This is what, this was the public hearing.
The 150, okay, yeah, okay, my bad. I'm sorry, there were two other items, yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
And, and Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Mercer?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
That's not yet. Thank you. Back to communications, motion, response, USPS. Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam City Manager, for your timely response. Thank you for writing the letters to Congresswoman Lori Trahan, Senator Elizabeth Warren, Senator Ed Markey, to urge the continued support of the United States Postal Service. As you know, they are at risk of losing funding, also dismantling some of the vital services that many millions of Americans come to depend on. The USPS issue is not only a political issue for election purpose and so forth, but even though we had over 12,000 requests for mail-in ballots during the preliminary, the primary, and the numbers expected to go up substantially higher. But, you know, thousands of residents in law and millions across the country, we depend on the USPS service for prescription delivery as well as for the government benefits. So, you know, thank you so much for getting the letters out in a timely manner. And, you know, very, very well done, nice wording in, in the letter. And I'm pretty sure that, well, they will receive it well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this one? Motion response F-150, President Ave. Counselor Mercy, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the report, but I'm a little troubled still. So the answer that I got out of this report was, the city will clean it. I'm grateful that the city will clean it, but that doesn't solve the problem. How many times is the city going to have to go over there and clean it? What can the city legally do to acquire the property? It seems that this property is owned by a company, and if the people, the heirs, will pay him back for all the taxes, then they'll, they'll acquire the property back. It's quite evident that the lady died in 2013. It's 2020 now, and we're no closer than we were in 2013. And I went by the other day, it's deplorable, disgusting. It looks like, well, there must be all kind of animals living there and cats and everything else. But I, I'm just so fed up with someone that acquires the property. I'm happy about that, and I'm happy that they're paying the back taxes and stuff. But they should be made to be the owner at, at the time to take responsibility to clean the property. Once they did that and paid the bills, that ain't enough. I mean, I pay my taxes too, and I'm alone, but I can't let this property go and not cut the grass and all this and that. So I think this is not a good, it, it's a report that I'm, I'm aware of, and I thank you for the report, but I'm not happy about it. I'm not happy about it. Something has to be done. This is just one piece of property. Are we, what about all over the city when property is taking place like this? It devalues the property. If this were next door to me, I'd be out of my mind. I'd be so upset, but it isn't. But still, I'm upset. It's in my neighborhood. You wouldn't want it in any of your neighborhoods or next door to you nonetheless. I'm just disgusted, to tell you the truth. People acquire the mortgage and pay the back taxes, but they're not made to clean the property. That's a shame. I, I'd like to do something to get it into proper ownership so that a nice family can move into the neighborhood, maintain this, and have a beautiful home to live and make all their neighbors happy. That's all I'm asking for. And we have done that before. We've done it on Clark Road to that home that is gorgeous. I brought up Andover Street, 887. The place is tremendous now. You know, you go, we should do this one at a time, and this is the one we should be working on right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
I know Eric Fliegel has, has a report. Unfortunately, the company just bought the tax lien, not the property. So Eric, if you can address that, and it has been held up in land court. But Eric, if you can address some of the concerns that Counselor Mercer has raised, especially given the condition of the property.
Sure, and I just want to, I just want to clarify one point. So the, the former owner of the property did die in 2013. Apparently, she had no will, and her estate was never probated. So the property is currently in limbo. It's technically owned by her heirs. They defaulted on the taxes multiple times over the past several years, and the tax liens are sold to Talage, but not the property. The property is still owned by the heirs. So Talage, the company that buys the tax liens, does not have the right to go on the property. They do not own it. They don't have the right to clean it up. They don't have the authority to do something because it's somebody else's property at the time. So what they are trying to do is secure those rights by filing a foreclosure. The unfortunate problem is, they have to notify all of the heirs, and one of the heirs is unfortunately being very difficult to track down. One of the five heirs. They have not managed to track down the fifth heir to provide them the notice that the land court requires before a foreclosure happens. So they are in the process of trying to do that. The land court during this pandemic is basically, you know, for all intents and purposes, at a standstill. And so the, they were already, pre-pandemic, very slow, and right now they're even slower. So Talage is aware that there's issues on the property, but they simply do not have the legal authority to go in and do anything to the property. It's owned by the heirs of, of the former owner.
Eric, could we, and I've read, you know, this, and it has been going on a long time. Is it possible that we can have a meeting with Talage to see what other alternatives they have thought with the land court? Because I think, I think the point of if an heir is being difficult, are there other ways of dealing with, whether it's publication for service and things? I mean, you know, and really find out from Talage, have they explored all options under the law?
I, I did have that, that, a conversation with them, with Talage, and they are seeking alternate means of service. Because it's not that the heir is being difficult, the heir is just not around. They can't, they can't put, put a, an address and a, on the, on the person. So they are seeking alternate means of service. It has to get approved by the land court.
No, I, I, I realize that.
But they, they have filed that with the land.
It's O'Connor, I don't know whether, Christine? I didn't know whether you had anything.
No.
No, I mean, I think everything's been, been adequately covered. The only, the only thing that I would add to this conversation is that the tools that are given to the city to go and to clean the property and lean the property are, are excellent remedies to these, these types of issues. And particularly in this point, we will, assuming Talage is going to be successful in, in achieving a final foreclosure, we will be getting that money back. And it is a way of at least being able to promptly go and clean up this property. Development Services has already cited them. This week, we'd be in a position to be able to go and, and to do that work. And, and at least there's a remedy, an immediate remedy to the, to the problem as the longer-term solution continues to be worked at.
Thank you. Counselor Mercer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. From what I understand, the fifth heir that's being very difficult to find has a son that lives in Drake it. Why don't you try to find the son and Drake it through their attorney that's handling the other four heirs, and that's attorney's name, and see if you can find out from the son, where's the father? I mean, I'm certainly sure if, I don't know. I, I'm just, why don't you just go, why don't, why don't you talk to the neighbors? They know more about this family than I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion on this one? Thank you. Billings and Barker intersection. Counselor Elliott?
Thank you to Natasha Van for following up. This is, this came as a request from the constituent that lives right on that intersection. So I think a recommendation is a good one to install the best common measures. So I, I think that's good news, and I'm sure they'll be pleased with those. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion response H. Andover Street, Counselor Conway. Any questions? Are you there, Counselor Conway? You're on mute still.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for, for the report. I appreciate that. Madam Manager, I, again, I, I thank Diane Trad, and, and also it's my understanding that Christine Clancy and Natasha were involved in ping-chang in this particular report. And I want report. And I want to say that, uh, I think that each city council that I can think of, um, has talked about trying to slow things down, uh, in, in streets like, on streets like, uh, like Andover Street. So again, I'm glad to see that there is something that's going to be done there and hopefully that will make a difference and slow, and slow the, um, uh, the traffic down because I know that, you know, that's one thing that people constantly talk to me about, uh, they're right in front of my house and as we're talking, people are, are going by, uh, driving 60 and 70 miles an hour. It's absolutely in- incredible. So again, I'm glad that we're taking a step here. And again, I want to thank, uh, also I want to thank, um, previous city managers that have put motions, excuse me, uh, city councillors that have put motions on, uh, dealing with, uh, streets like, uh, Andover Street. So it's a, it, I think it's a collective effort, uh, and a partnership with all of us trying to, uh, trying to make things a little bit safer, uh, in the, uh, in the neighborhood. So again, I, I thank you very much on that. I, I wonder if, um, would it be, um, could we have Natasha come up and explain a little bit more detail on this report? Is that possible?
Uh, sure. She, Natasha is on, uh, Zoom this evening and, and you are correct. Natasha, as well as Ting Chang and, and Christine Clancy all worked, um, on Andover Street and putting together, investigating this and putting together the report. Natasha, if you can, uh, address some of the contents of the report?
Um, sure. Um, Madam Manager and, uh, Counsel Conway. Yeah. So, um, just for the folks at home, um, essentially what we're looking at is, uh, trying to make the crossing at Douglas Street a little more safe. Um, one of the problems is that the crossing is located behind a large tree. It makes it difficult for, um, traffic coming into town to see people trying to cross. In addition, uh, that when people are taking a left onto Andover Street off Douglas, um, people could be in the crosswalk and that makes it a little bit of a, not a safe situation. So, um, previous, as Counsel Conway mentioned, the previous city council, um, appropriated about $200,000 to make some improvements on Andover Street. And so, um, we're going to make improvements at that intersection as well as, um, do some sidewalk improvements and other sections. And then at, um, Clark, uh, and Raven, we're going to put in, um, elevated crosswalks which will, um, slow cross traffic down. It, it won't be, the, the raised crosswalk won't be across Andover Street. It'll be at the cross streets. Um, and, uh, I'm trying to think if there are, so will, that there'll be a, um, a speed hump on, on Clark Road. Uh, I can, if you have any other questions, Ting and Christine also worked on the, um, the cost estimate and, uh, the engineering part of this.
Yeah. Natasha, I have a, I have a quick question for you through, uh, through you, Matt, uh, Mr. Mayor, Natasha. Um, I know that when the school is open, it's not unusual and I have observed it a number of times and it, uh, thank heavens that there hasn't been a, an accident, but, uh, I know the kids will, will press those buttons and as soon as it starts to blink, they automatically think, uh, it's time to cross. And what happens is it's a blinking orange light and cars, they don't stop. They keep on going. So it is, it is kind of a, it's a dangerous situation because again, the kids at that age, when they see the lights, they just automatically assume it's all right to move and go across the street. Is there anything that can be done with that? Natasha? I think you know what I'm talking about there, right?
Yeah. Um, yeah. And I know that a lot of times when school is in session, a police officer is stationed there to help. Um, because I know the crossing guard has also, uh, reiterated that that's been an issue, um, uh, being children being able to cross safely. When, um, when Ting and Christine and I went for our site visit, we actually spoke to the homeowner who's, um, the crosswalk is directly in front of his house. And he, uh, talked to us about the, basically in order to keep the kids safe, the parents tended to walk their kids there and cross them over, um, which is obviously one option, but it's not always, um, going to be the case that a parent is able to do that.
Right.
The big, one of the things about moving the crosswalk over and, uh, and the flashing lights along with it is that it will enable, um, a much clearer sight, line of sight for cars. Part of, when people are crossing from your side of Andover Street over to the school side, if, if they're waiting behind that giant tree, if they push the button, the, it starts flashing, but nobody can see someone there waiting to cross. I, I myself, when we were out there, pushed the button and I had to basically step out into traffic wearing my bright yellow vest. Um, and so traffic, you know, did stop for me because I'm, you know, was wearing bright yellow. But, uh, we do think that by, just by moving it, that will greatly improve visibility, uh, and will greatly improve compliance because rectangular rapid flashing beacons typically have a very, which is what that flashing light is called, typically have a very high level of compliance with traffic. That when traffic sees, when people see the, drivers see the lights flashing, they do stop and allow pedestrians to cross. So, um, we do think that making that shift will, will, um, have created improvement in compliance and traffic.
Well, I'm glad you're going to make that change on it because I know at this particular point, they don't stop. And, and I remember a few years ago, I did stop and, uh, to let, let the kids go. And, uh, I get rear-ended because they don't, cars, they really don't care. I know that I've seen, I've seen adults stand there, push the button and, and it, cars go by, maybe 10, 15 cars. Nobody bothers stopping. Not only don't they stop, they don't slow down. I, so again, I know it's a work in progress, but you know, streets like that, that have, uh, um, you know, a high traffic area and also the ability to speed, uh, you know, these, I, I know that this council certainly is focusing on different parts of the city to slow things down and make things a lot safer for the, uh, for the resident. And so again, I thank you for the report and I thank you for the work.
Um, Counsel Conway, could I just add one more thing on that I neglected to mention? Sure. So one of the things that, um, is also proposed is a pilot program to create sort of a, a median, uh, refuge in that area. That's part of the problem with the crosswalk on Andover Street is it's a, it's a very long stretch to cross. And as you've mentioned, it's, traffic is going quickly and it's a high volume of traffic. So one of the things that's recommended in the manual and uniform traffic control device, devices for MUTCD, which you guys hear me mention a lot, um, they, they want you to have a pedestrian refuge island in the center of a street like Andover so that pedestrians only have to consider crossing half the road before they, um, look the other way. So that's, that's another thing that we're looking at is, um, a pilot program of, uh, trying to make a safe pedestrian location in the median.
Got it. All right.
Can I, can I just jump in on that before we get to Council Mercy and Council Samaras? That makes me very nervous when we're talking about an island in the middle of that road. It's, cars go, can go very fast. They can get distracted. We have people waiting in the middle of that road. That could be more dangerous. So just take another look at that.
Yeah. So it would, yeah, it will not be, um, we would not consider it if it wasn't a safe solution. So it, and it's, it's, it, throughout the, the number of times that we've looked at Andover Street, we're always developing options that, um, meet, that are compliant with the MUTCD and are safe for, we, so we would only do that if it could be a permanent solution. Um, what we're considering for this particular option is not a permanent, it's a, it's a pilot program, but that, that would be part of a way to make that a more safe option is if, if there was a curve and a raised median.
Okay. Thank you. Council Mercy and then Council Samaras?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad that Natasha is still here because I, I wanted to share with you a suggestion from an Andover Street resident and I wholeheartedly agree with her. It was to place speed bumps in the center turning lanes because drivers use the center lanes to speed past cars who have the audacity to travel at the correct speed of 35 miles an hour. So the center lines are not there for the purpose of speeding past drivers. So she offered this suggestion and I thought it was pretty good. I don't know if it can be done, but I don't, I don't know why it couldn't. And I see the calming effect of this.
Um, yes, yes, Counsel Mercer, that is, you're correct. That is one of the places that, um, we were suggesting, um, the speed bump pilot. So we're still trying to finalize funding for that, but yes, that, at that particular crossing. And you are correct in, in that people do pass in the center lane on Andover Street and they're not supposed to do that. That's not the intention of that center lane. Um, so I know the police are aware of that and are planning on doing some enforcement. Um, but I, I have been on Andover Street and had someone pass me in the middle lane. So it's, that is an unsafe, uh, and illegal thing to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I want to thank the city manager and I want to thank, uh, Diane Trad and her team for this report. This was a good motion. I'll tell you why I think, believe it's a good motion because it has a response that outlines steps that could be taken. Uh, when I first came on board this council, I know I made, I, the motions regarding, uh, some mitigation of traffic on Andover Street as well as many of the other, the present members of this council have over the past few years to talk about what can be done. And in the past, I've received answers such as why we can't do it, what, or what steps we couldn't take because Natasha of state regulation. And what it seems here is that you've taken a good look at everything that has to be done and are now taking some real steps. And just to hear that idea of, uh, the speed bumps in the middle lane, that's, that's a serious response to what has been a longstanding problem that just has not been addressed. And I'm, I'm just pleased with the fact that, uh, the city has come up with, these are some of the steps that we can make and we have an intent on doing what's right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions on this? Uh, H, uh, motion I, traffic calming on Bottom Ave. That is, any questions, Counsel Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think this is, uh, this is good news. Um, following up on, uh, motions that have been made and letters that have been sent regarding, uh, Detective Boulevard, traffic calming measures. Um, I, I think what's interesting is, um, the report does note, uh, denote how many accidents have taken place on Detective Boulevard, 289 crashes. So there are some recommendations, um, that I was naturally pleased to see. Um, however, um, for you, Mr. Mayor, to, um, I mean, there, there were some areas of the Detective Boulevard where there are no recommendations and I, I was, I was kind of disappointed with that, given the number of crashes, uh, particularly, you know, Regatta Field, um, and Bird Explanade. There's, you know, 46, 46 crashes each in, in both of those, um, sections. Um, this report delineates 15 sections that were eval, evaluated and there are traffic calming measures, which is, you know, a positive thing. But, um, and, and those particular stretches, uh, Natasha, are those, um, this report seems to indicate that those are city-owned. Um, that's under the city's jurisdiction and does it not make sense to, you know, to reduce those lanes? I, I did see the traffic counts and then, you know, it goes from 18,000 and it dropped 11,000 from the Old Ferry Road, uh, to the Denny Ford Line, which, which makes some sense. But there are some good recommendations. Don't get me wrong. I just think, you know, I'd like to, I'd take it a step further. And secondly, um, on the speed limit, I did see that the city, uh, took action, um, on one section to reduce it to 35. Um, would it not make sense to, does it really have to be 45 miles an hour from, you know, in some of those sections?
Um, uh, Counsel Elliot, the, I, I did think that the report would have had, had some more meaty recommendations. Um, the, it, you know, it's, it's a long report. It had a lot of backup. I have not, um, had the opportunity to follow up with, um, Mastot to talk to them about what their timelines for some of the recommendations they made. Um, they did, they'd made some recommendations in the segment, um, past Old Ferry. So just for the people at home, Mastot owns most of the road. The city owns the portion basically from Old Ferry Road back to Varnum Avenue, more or less. It's a little bit on either side. And now the recommendations that Mastot made for the, um, moving toward Cross River Center were, um, basically to eliminate some of the passing lanes, which I think is, um, a good idea. They did have a, a lot of crashes, um, in those sections. Um, as you said, they broke it down into 15 different sections. One of the worst sections was from the Vanderburg Explanade to, excuse me, Esplanade to the Regatta Field. It had, there were 46 crashes and Mastot's main suggestion was, um, making some improvements to the pedestrian signal there. Um, and I, I, I was, I wouldn't be opposed to any of the recommendations they made. I do think that there, um, are some more substantive things that could be done. Um, we do have a shared streets grant that will, um, be like a road diet on, on VFW from, basically from the Vanderburg Explanade up to Varnum. So I think that that will really give us some good information about, um, whether a road diet is appropriate in more sections of the VFW. We have to, um, evaluate the impact on congestion and on traffic. Um, but yes, to, to your point, I think that there, um, maybe are a few more things that could be done. I, I will note that, um, Mastot did mention that they are going to, um, put up speed limit signs and, um, and add some more warning signs for curves. So I think that will also be helpful, um, for people driving, uh, on the boulevard.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Rourke?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, reading the report, it does say increased police enforcement. As somebody that goes via onto Old Ferry, uh, VFW Highway, I have noticed a heavily, um, increased police presence over the past, uh, couple of months. So, uh, I know the neighborhood appreciates that and, uh, or say anything else that we can do, all the comments from Counsel Elliot would, uh, would be well, uh, taken into account as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Um, I have one quick comment, Natasha. So again, um, like do we, did you say we own Bottom Road all the way up to the state line to, to the Tinsborough Line? Or we don't?
Oh, yes. Varnum, yes. I was referring to, um, Pawtucket, the section of Pawtucket Boulevard from Varnum to Old Ferry is, that's the city's road.
Okay. So why like would, why wouldn't Bottom Ave be a good test pilot for speed hops periodically, whatever, every quarter of mile from Tinsborough all the way down to East Meadow Road? That would slow traffic down, wouldn't it?
It, it would indeed. Um, I-
And then would save them money on police vehicles.
Yeah. Um, okay. So you're, are, are you referencing the traffic calming, uh, thing on Varnum right now? Is that the question?
Yeah, Bottom Ave.
Yeah. So I, I do think that there are, Varnum is definitely, there are, there is a speed problem there. Um, one of the things about with the Market Basket going in is we're going to have a traffic calming study and they're going to make concrete recommendations about, and one of those things could be speed bumps. Um, it could be, um, chicanes to, uh, introduce, um, artificial curves to slow people down. It could be raised crosswalks. It could, there could be any number of things. Um, but a, uh, an engineering consultant will evaluate Varnum because Market Basket is putting up a certain a, amount of funds, um, to pay for a traffic calming study. Um, and then in addition, they have a traffic monitoring program associated with the, um, once that Market Basket is, um, occupied and open, um, at six months, at a year, two years on out to five years. And then, um, we can, if, if we end up with more traffic or traffic in different places than was anticipated, um, they have committed to doing more mitigation. So I think that there are definitely options on Varnum Avenue, um, that, and, and speed bumps may be a feasible option, but we're going to do a study and determine what the best options are. And that will also involve some, um, uh, resident input as well. Is that, is that-
Okay. So I, I respect your job. I think it's a hard job and I, I think you do a great job. Um, that's Counsel Rourke and Counsel, um, Elliot's, uh, neighborhood. I mean, I just, you know, and again, with all due respect, we've been going over this for the last eight years that I've been on the council. I don't know why, I mean, can we just make a motion and put speed hops up there or what? I mean, it, it's, this has been going on for me for eight years, probably longer for Counsel Elliot. And I mean, he certainly knows how fast people are going in his neighborhood. So to wait another two years, it, you know, this is the stuff that we get hammered on week after week from residents. So is there an immediate solution we could have for, for Bottom Ave?
Um, I, I guess I can evaluate whether or not that would be an appropriate solution. Um, I I guess I can evaluate whether or not that would be an appropriate solution. The I believe the Market Basket will be in place and open this fall. That was my understanding. And then six months after that is when the, but and and we can initiate the traffic calming study. I would recommend we wait a few months until we know what the traffic impact is on Varnum. But I I can certainly look into what might be a feasible option in the meantime.
Okay, I mean, I I would just say that maybe Council Elliot and Council Rook get in touch with you this week and just give their comments unless they want to do it now. But again, you know, years and years of hearing the same thing on that road in that neighborhood. And we haven't done anything. So I don't know, Council Elliot, do you have any comments on that? You're on mute.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's thirty thousand cars, as you can see from the report, that
Yeah.
you know, goes through Varnum Ave and, you know, there's, there's a major employer in the city. There's the, there's the hospital and certainly the Market Basket is going to add more traffic, at least from Old Ferry to West Meadow Road or West Meadow Road or Old Ferry. So yeah, I I'd like to see the report from, I'd like to have Natasha to look at it and and get back to us and see what impact that, you know, that would have because there you know, the speed limit, you can lower the speed limit, but I think people get on that road and I can tell you nine times out of ten, most, lots of the folks that are tailgating, they're going to Tinsborough or to Hudson or somewhere else. So they're, I think they're coming out of the hospital and sitting through. So I I don't oppose it, but I don't want to, I think so much that, you know, there's, yeah, no, I I I'm good with that. I I think it makes some sense that maybe at certain sections of Varnum Ave where it's very thickly settled, maybe that that's the way to look at it.
Okay, thank you. Council Rock?
Yeah, yeah, I I appreciate the suggestion. I would really like a report for us. I mean, you know, we don't see speed bumps on Andover Street, Stevens Street, you know, Gorm Street even, you know, I I agree a bit with and that's hopefully something we could do. Agree, but I would prefer to look at all other options first before you put speed bumps in. You know, it is thirty-five to forty-five in certain areas. So you're going to have people slamming on the brakes when they get to speed bumps. That could cause, you know, some problems. So you know, I'm open to all options to see how we could help it out. But I think right now, just to throw them in, I I think maybe just a slight bit early, just my opinion.
All right, thank you. Any further comments? Thank you, Natasha. Okay, informational reports, J Mast dot safety analysis, Detective Boulevard and VFW Highway, Madam Manager.
Well, I believe Natasha already gave that report.
All right, yeah. Okay, so budget?
Yeah, the, so on the agenda tonight later on is referring the FY twenty-one budget to a public hearing two weeks from tonight. You know, CFO Connor Baldwin can do a brief presentation on the budget in in advance if if the council would like an overview of what is included in the FY twenty-one budget, as I said, in advance of the public hearing, which will be coming up on the twenty-second of September. So are you, Mr. Mayor, to the council, if that's the wish of the council?
Sure. Council Elliot?
Um, I'd like to perhaps refer this to the finance subcommittee to have a meeting prior to the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And the presentation can be made at the finance subcommittee for the public hearing.
Okay.
Great.
Set up a time. Council Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that this is the city council and we got to do a budget. But I'm, and I'm not privy to things happening on the school side, but that's where you come in. So I was wondering if you understand or know anything about cafeterias, workers that maybe hit the that will be the next people on the chopping block to get laid off. I'm hearing that a lot of the cafeteria workers are going to be let go as far as laid off. Do you know anything about that? Is that possibly true? Because I remember last year they laid off the library aides. And it seems to me whenever they decide that they're going to make cuts, they go to the lowest paid people in the city and they lay off in mass quantity. Because I'm understanding that they're going to close cafeterias in five schools and they're going to get a food truck and go around to different schools. Are you aware of any of that or am I wrong? I don't know. I'm just asking you.
Yeah, there's a lot going on right now. Still negotiating with UTL. Cafeteria workers are under that. And yes, with COVID nineteen, they're trying to work on what schools are going to. Most, most schools are going to open at twenty-five percent if we can come to an agreement. And then they are working on agreement with what they're going to do with food service. Trying to limit the amount of kids, children that congregate together. So right now they're trying to initiate a plan where children would eat in classrooms that are in the building. They're trying to determine if it's better to have all the cafeterias open or if they had better plan to open so many cafeterias and deliver the food. So it's it's a little too early to tell right now. There's a lot of talk, a lot of negotiation going on.
Right.
But nothing set in concrete yet.
All right.
Can't get an agreement.
So I understand what you're saying, but if you can keep this in mind, because if we're nothing else, we should at least be fair. We should at least be fair, because I'm going to tell you that a person with twenty-two years as a cafeteria cook is going to be one of the people they suspect to be let go. And I think that's very, very unfair, considering the fact that we just hired someone new to in in the central office that's getting forty thousand dollars. Now, I don't know if it's because that person has connections, but but I think that's very unfair. I also heard that, and and this is what I'm understanding, that there is a revolving fund that sustains the cafeteria workers, just as there is a revolving fund for the water, sewer and parking. So I want to know if that's true or not. I want to know where's the money that was in the revolving fund? Did they use that like social security? United States does. So I want to know why are we laying off workers when we have a revolving account? That's, those are my concerns. And if you could just, as a representative of this council and my constituents that have children in the school system and depend on the school system to earn a living as they have for twenty-two years, I'm concerned about that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll give you the answers to that. Thank you. So where are we? Information, uh, school appropriation letter and the school facility preparation update. We basically gave that report already. Anybody have questions on that, Council Rock?
So, yeah, I guess the appropriation letter. You know, maybe Mr. Baldwin can give quick thirty seconds of what what's contained in it and what's going forward.
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city council. This is an update of the letter that is typically provided by the city manager to the superintendent of schools that includes the single line item appropriation for the schools each year. A earlier version of this letter was provided to the superintendent after the governor's budget was released in January. As the council is well aware, those numbers have changed. The legislature has has made a commitment to level fund the chapter seventy account plus an amount for inflation.
Mine.
That that number is included in the 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 number in the letter. It also includes the amount from the tax levy that is included as the direct cash contribution to the schools and makes mention of an estimate for the non-cash contribution or what we often refer to as as maintenance of effort as it pertains to the net school spending requirement by the district each year. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have, but it's provided for informational purposes.
Great, thank you. Yeah. So, so Mr. Matt, I know you said earlier that there's no agreement in place right now at all, right? So what happens if the first day of school comes, there's no agreement? Like what? I mean, does the, does the school committee or superintendent have to get a decision to say who's going to teach and who's not? Or if there's no agreement, what happens? What's the end game?
I mean, it's my understanding right now, if there's no agreement, there'll be no first day in school learning. And probably no first day of remote learning.
Okay, so if that's, so we come back in two weeks at a public hearing. You know, can a motion be made to further reduce the appropriation? You know, why, why are we giving them money for if they're not going to do any, you know, and no, no work's going to happen? I mean, you know, kids citywide are going to be screwed, right? So if if we're here in two weeks and hasn't been a day of school yet, you know, why are we giving a dime?
There's a lot of frustration on everybody. Yes. It's just so frustrating going to these three, four hour meetings and nothing's getting accomplished. And it's all because, you know, seems like the whole argument is over this third party. Right, engineering group, which we have in the building.
I mean, it's a, it's a red herring, right? Call it what it is.
Yeah.
Is Christine acquainted with us still, Madam Manager?
Yes.
All right, so Madam Solicitor, you know, if we're here in two weeks and, you know, our kids haven't gone back into school yet, either remote or in school, you know, does the council have the right to further reduce the appropriation?
I mean, that's something that would take some further study on. And but we can certainly take a look at that in order to provide a a more definite answer.
Okay, if we had that maybe by the next meeting, you know, because I mean, something, I mean, as the mayor said, they've installed for, you know, for weeks, for months now. And if something has to be done to spur, you know, an agreement. Yeah, I think it's up under the council as well to to try to, you know, make something happen. So I'll leave it at that.
Council, my, my understanding, and the solicitor can correct me, is that if there isn't an agreement with a union or unions and and they are already out of contract, then the last year contract applies until there is a new agreement. That's typically what has happened in the past. So for instance, if a union has been out of out of contract, the prior contract controls until there is a new contract reached, whatever the term of that prior contract.
But that would, that would, you're right on that. But if they don't want to, this, this is unique because they don't want to go into the building. That's the issue. So doesn't, that throws everything off, doesn't it?
Well, they still have a contract. There's still a contract in the, now.
So what's the difference if they have a contract, but they refuse? It's, I suppose to refuse to work.
For that to the law department because that'd be a breach of their contract. But, you know, the you know, there, there's a new component that is remote, right? So, you know, but again, I don't want to go too far down the road, but typically, generally speaking, when a union and, you know, administration hasn't been able to reach a contract, the prior contract controls until there is a contract that's reached. And this sometimes has gone on for months and months and months in the past. And ultimately, they, an agreement is reached. I don't know if the solicitor has anything to add to that.
I mean, that's, that's correct. The, the, the evergreen clauses kick in and the, and the language continues on. And if that's the, if that's the extent of the, of the question, then then that would be the case.
So, so I guess I have another question. So if that's the answer, correct answer, which I I agree with, Amanda. Thanks. I've been through it before, I'm sure. A couple of councils who are former mayors have been through this as well. If last, if the current year takes into effect and, you know, the the UTL does not report to work either in school or remote, you know, are we obligated to pay them?
I defer to, I defer to the solicitor. I think then it becomes a legal issue if the union is is not performing, but I'll defer to the solicitor on that question.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what I understood, that the nature of your question was one of appropriation and services not not rendered. And and again, it's something that we would have to work with the school department on. And you know, there are, it could be breaches of the of the contract in addition to services such as like a new strike clause or something. But in any event, we would, we could work with the school department on the narrow issue of appropriation as it applies to the city. The rest of it, obviously, the rest of it, the school committee by statute and and the city manager in terms of successor contracts.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? I need a motion to accept and place on file by Council Rook, second by Council Elliot. Communication, appoint every general to the Board of Health. I need a motion to adopt, if there's not any questions, by Council Smarres, second by Council Drinkwater. Roll call? Council Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Legge?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noob?
Yes.
Council Rock?
Yes.
Council Smarres?
Yes.
Council Conway? I mean, Council Chow, sorry. Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Maggie? All right, vote to the city manager. Vote to accept timely receipt of the budget FY twenty-one. Permission to wait before reading, second reading by title, Commonwealth Massachusetts City of Lowell in City Council vote. Pursuant to Mass, Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-four thirty-two of the City Council of City of Lowell acknowledges timely receipt of the city manager on budget on September twenty eighth, twenty twenty. The recommended budget for City of Lowell fiscal year twenty twenty-one with the understanding that any recommended revisions as may be submitted by the city manager at a later date prior to the date of final approval of said budget by the city council shall collectively be considered the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one for the City of Lowell. Public hearing on the budget shall be advertised in Lowell sun on nine nine eleven twenty, to be held Tuesday, September twenty-second, twenty twenty at seven PM on the city council remote meeting and such other dates and times if necessary may be publicly announced by the city council. Sure. Motion to accept by Council Elliot, second by Council Smarres. Roll call? Council Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Legge?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noob?
Yes.
Council Rock?
Yes.
Council Smarres?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Nineties? Six-two. Vote appropriation order FY twenty-one budget. Motion to refer to the public hearing on September twenty-second, twenty twenty at seven PM by Council, Council Noob, second by Council Mercier. Six-three, vote, accept and expend fire safe grant.
Just a minute. Sure. We could do the next three together, right? Bundle, six, three, four and five?
Sure. Motion of bundle on by Council Rook, second by Council Mercy. Six-three, vote to accept and expend fire safe grant. Six-four, vote, accept, expend MCC grant from LMA and vote to accept and expend twenty thousand screening and gateway program. Yeah, okay. Second reading by Title. Commonwealth Massachusetts City of Lowell. Commonwealth Massachusetts City of Lowell City Council vote authorizing city manager acting through the fire department to accept and expend grant in total amount of one thousand seven hundred sixty-four from the Commonwealth Massachusetts via Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. In Commonwealth Massachusetts City of Lowell in Council vote authorizing city manager acting through the finance department to accept and expend gaming migration grant for the total amount of one hundred eighty thousand six twenty-eight from the Commonwealth Massachusetts via the Massachusetts Cultural Council. Commonwealth Massachusetts City of Lowell in City Council vote authorizing city manager to accept and expend the greening gateway cities grant from the Commonwealth Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Department of Conservation and Recreation, the amount of twenty thousand in reimbursements for items specifically related to tree planting, including creating new tree pits, stump removal, purchase of tree watering bags to help sustain the new planted trees in the City of Lowell. Note, motion to adopt by Council Rook, seconded by Council Chow. Roll call.
Council Elliot.
Yes.
Mayor Leggy.
Yes.
Council Mercier.
Yes.
Council Noom.
Yes.
Council Rook.
Yes.
Council Sumeris.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
Nine years.
Orders from the city manager, sixty day trial various. Permission away before reading, second reading by title motion. Commonwealth Massachusetts in City Lowell City Council order pursuant to chapter two-six-six in the Code of Ordinances, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, concerning section two-six-six dash six, therefore entitled Temporary Experimental Regulations, temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period of sixty days. Need a motion to adopt by Council Conway, second by Council Rook. Roll call.
Council Elliot.
Yes.
Mayor Leggy.
Yes.
Council Mercier.
Yes.
Council Noom.
Yes.
Council Rook.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
I missed somebody. Council Sumeris.
Yes.
How'd you forget that? Ordinances from the city manager. Eight-one, ordinance to amend fees, ordinance, chapter one fifty, motion refer to public hearing on September twenty-second, twenty yeah, September twenty-second, twenty twenty at seven P M by Council Sumeris, seconded by Council Conway. Eight-two, ordinance to amend metered, meter service wire, motion refer to public hearing on September twenty-second, twenty twenty at seven P M by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Noon. Eight-three, ordinance amend the revolving fund. Yeah, chapter twenty-eight, section twenty-eight, thirty-one dot one, motion refer to public hearing September twenty-second at twenty, September twenty-second, twenty twenty at seven P M by Council Noon, seconded by Council Drinkwater. Ordinance, eight-four, ordinance amend annual sewer charge used charge, motion refer to public hearing September twenty-second, twenty twenty at seven P M. By Council Mercier, seconded by Council Chow. Reports, any reports tonight now? Yeah, oh, nine-one, wire inspection, national grid request installation of pole at Andrew Street, motion to adopt and accept the accompanying order by Council Drinkwater, seconded by Council Elliot. Nine-two, wire inspection, national grid request installation of PVC conduit from new pole to existing manhole on Andrew Street. Motion adopt and accept the accompanying order by Council Chow, seconded by Council Mercier. Council Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we're talking about the words national grid, national, I'd just like to refer this to the city manager because national grid changed the pole with a street light on it at the corner of Seventh Street at Methuen Street, but they never put the street light back. And the area is extremely dark. The man who was asking for it has a handicapped wife who can't go to the store in the evening when it gets dark for fear she won't be seen and she'll be hit. Now, this has come to the manager's office a few times and it, I don't know who gets this. I don't know if it's national grid or does a city, a city electrician put up the city light? I don't know. Or do we just change the light? But this is very important that this light goes back up. It's not like a mess for a brand new light that never existed. They, national grid never, they took the pole down to put another pole, but they never put the street light back on. You think we could do something about that?
We'll, we'll, we'll look into that. We'll find out who owns the light and make sure it's taken care of.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, petitions. Uh, let's see, we got claims to property damage, motion refer to law department for reporting recommendation by Council Rook, seconded by Council Noon. Miscellaneous, ten-two, residents of East Sixth Street request E-sixth street be added to the paving list and efforts be made to end the noise pollution in that area. Need a motion to refer to the city manager, PPW for report and recommendation by Councilor Rock, seconded by Council Chow. Ten-three, miscellaneous, McBee, McBee Development LLC requests permission to address city council regarding traffic and parking issues on Cherry Street which affect the access for police by ambulance and sanitation for residents. I don't think Mr. Brogdon's here. Nope, nope. So there's nobody here to speak on it, but need a motion refer to traffic engineer for a report and recommendation by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Mercier. Ten-four, Melissa Lauren, for the benefit of Rosa Castro, request installation of a handicap parking signs at three-twenty-seven east Merrimack Street. Need a motion to refer to that traffic engineer for a report and engine, and report and recommendation by Council Conway, seconded by Council Noon. City Council motion, eleven-one, Council Chow, request city manager implement the repainting of vehicle line safety markings on Thorn dyke street at YMCA Drive in the areas adjacent to the entrance of the Lowell connector, seconded by Council Rock. Council Chow.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, there is a registered speaker. We're trying to hook him up right now by phone. He's not able to, to have a visual, but we're gonna hook him up by phone if there's no objection.
Also, Mr. Mayor, motion eleven point one, point two, point three. They all related to the same constituent, constituent, which is a speaker. And we have him speak on all three motions at the same time because they are relevant and I would like to speak on them at the same time as well.
Most certainly. Bundle them together. So I'll read all the motions together. Eleven point two, Council Chow, request city manager investigate the addition of a left turning arrow traveling inbound from Chump Street onto Plain Street. Repainting crosswalks at all three intersections. Eleven-three, Council Chow, request city manager investigate the addition of a left turning arrow traveling outbound from Chelmsford Street onto Industrial Ave. So the motion is seconded by Council Rook. We have to call you yet?
Nice. You're the waiting woman. I'm gonna let him in right now.
Okay, Mr. Daley, you're welcome to speak.
I am, sir.
Yep, just state your name and your address for the record and you have five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Michael Daley. I'm on Holton Street in Lowell. I'd like to say good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council and Madam Manager. Working with Council Chow on the three motions, eleven-one, eleven-two, and eleven-three. I'd like to let you know that we've been working with Council Chow and former Senator Foshe with the LRTA, trying to get Mastart to do something on the motion that Council Chow put in, which was eleven-one at Thorn dyke street, and this is a very safety sensitive concern. The lines there are obliterated. So I called up the city and I talked with Ms. Natasha Vance, and she tells me that this is a ward of the state. This is Mastart. And she tells me that this is not on their radar for a while. We need to get the Lowell delegation through the city council to get somebody to get Mastart up here and paint these lines. There's three lines going northbound, say towards into the city. And one lane coming outbound or southbound going to Gorham Street. The third lane is a left turn to Guineahale and back onto the Lowell Connector. With Council Chow in my car, we did this and guess what? There was a car coming head on for my car. You can't see the lines at all. They're gone. This has to be done now. And they just get done painting the lines on the connector. Why didn't they do this? The other motion, eleven-two, left turn on Chelmsford Street, playing in Chelmsford Street is probably one of the most dangerous intersections in the city. And there's accidents there all the time. The lines have to be repainted there all the way. I would say from Westford Street right up to the city line, but all the white lines too. The city about two years ago painted the double yellow lines and have done nothing to the other lines, the crosswalks, nothing, nothing's done. And if you're coming in from Chelmsford or say northbound on one-ten, you need to be in the right lane to turn right into Plain Street. Well, people going straight. So if you're in the center lane, you wanna go straight, you're meeting up with people in the middle, and there's accidents. And I'm sure the Lowell police have plenty of reports on that. We have to have striping done there. Also, we need a left turn control signal, traffic control signal. So in other words, when everybody's red, you get a left turn signal from Chelmsford Street left into Plain Street, which headed towards the connector and also coming the other way, a left turn into Plain Street headed up towards the Laurel Lee School. Motion eleven-three, Chelmsford and Stevens Street. The lines from the Mickey Ward Circle are past Lowell's Way up to the ninety-nine restaurant at Chelmsford Street need to be repainted again. We painted the double yellow lines, but did nothing with the white traffic control signals. When you're coming up from Mickey Ward Circle to Lowell's Way, on the right-hand line, you take a right to Lowell's Way. Vehicles now can't see the lines. They can't see the signs. They're going straight. That's an accident waiting to be happened. Also, with that intersection, if you're coming southbound on one-ten or Chelmsford Street headed towards Chelmsford, there's three lanes going southbound. Two lanes go straight, the third lane takes a left. We need to have a left turn signal, traffic control signal installed there like they have coming the other way. So when you get all the lights red, you get a left turn into Stevens Street and a left turn in an industrial ave at the same time, and then you can continue on with regular traffic control signals. That's what I have to say. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daley. Council Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank Mr. Mike Daley for bringing issues to my attention and for speaking on behalf of the motions, and he described it very clearly. Just review a little bit on Thorn dyke street, a few trouble inbound from the, I think Lowell Connector Bridge overpass inbound, the vehicle lanes that would take you either up to enter the Lowell Connector. And if you got further to the lights with YMCA Drive, as Mr. Daley mentioned, there's no lines, so the vehicle comes opposite direction. They don't know which lane they're supposed to be in. And the vehicle come the same street going inbound, they don't know what lane they're supposed to be in. So that can easily cause accidents, and I'm not sure whether the city or the state would be responsible. But I would like to request the city manager to give a report if it is indeed the DOT. If they would have any plans to repaint that area. It is a big safety issue. And going to motions eleven point two, eleven point three. That's Chelmsford Street, Chelmsford and Plain and Chelmsford and Stevens, which changed to Industrial Avenue once you pass the, the traffic light going outbound. But on the Chelmsford Street, traveling inbound at Plains to intersections, that's really one, two, three, four, that, I think that's five, five, five-way intersection right there. And it's very confusing. If you're traveling from any, from the other directions, they all left turn arrow, but if you're traveling from Chelmsford, make a left turn at the AG Portras shoe company. There's no left turn arrow. I think that would benefit the safety for, for the residents, for drivers. Very, very confusing. And again, all, all the markings in that area, our street markings are disappearing. They're all faded. And again, going outbound on Chelmsford Street, going towards the ninety-nine. Again, if you travel from other directions, they are left turn arrows. But if you're traveling outbound on Chelmsford Street, taking a left turn onto Industrial Ave or going towards Lowell Connector, basically during the rush hour, even though it's not bad right now, but I remember when people were working full force, it's very, very dangerous. Try to edge your way out to make a left turn. If you could investigate the traffic safety in the area, we would appreciate a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments on these three? Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Next motion tonight by myself, request city manager to look into possible use of new technology for filling potholes throughout the city. Seconded by Council Shawn. Thank you. If, I, I just, someone sent me some information. You know, it's something we should be looking at for the future. There are trucks out there. There's actually like many different trucks that we could use. It's kind of like, if you just look at it, what we do with the trash right now. So they used to have one truck with a driver and, and two or three helpers on a trash truck. Now they have trucks out there that can be operated by one person and basically go around doing the potholes. So it's just something we should compare with man hours, equipment, and see if it's in the city's best use to buy one of these one trucks that fill the potholes, you know? And maybe, I know Mr. O'Malley does a great job, but he'll probably be retiring soon. So we're gonna have to look for three trucks to fill the potholes that he does. So this is a suggestion that we should take a look at that. Thank you. Any questions on this great motion? All those in favor say aye. Next motion tonight by myself, request city manager work with the proper departments in order to establish a permanent home for the city, in the city for the eighty therapeutic day school. So seconded by Council Elliot. Again, Madam Manager, if we could get the ball rolling on this, working with the school department and whatever departments we need. We really should try to find a permanent home. I know they came up with a solution by renting out a school in Chelmsford. It was a good idea at the time, but it just, we've outgrown that, that school so quickly. So, and of course, as everyone knows, that in a therapeutic day school for autism consistency, you know, we don't wanna be moving these kids, these children around. They're with us for a few years and we wanna serve them the best we can. So if we can look for, start working on something that may, you know, benefit us and the students for a long time. That would be appreciated. Any show, Council Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a good motion. I did receive an email from, I believe, the director. And I can remember in years past, we were looking for site, knowing that this was a sort of growing number of students in the cities, and rather than go out of district and pay, you know, pay thousands of dollars. of district and pay, you know, pay thousands of dollars, um, why not look at setting up, um, a school right here in Lowell? So I think this, I think it's a good motion. I think this is an area where we can look at still providing great service. We see the trend of the increased number of students and, um, and why not keep it in Lowell, keep it in the district and perhaps invite students from, from other locations. I did speak to CFO about this, um, earlier, so I'm glad to see the motion because I, I do think it makes some sense when we, when we do get the report, um, you know, maybe set up an ad hoc subcommittee. I do think it's very important that we work with the school committee on this and, and come, come up with a plan and follow through on that plan to, you know, it, it's a multi-year project, but I think moving forward, we can really see some cost savings for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Any announcements?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Madam Manager?
Two quick announcements. One, I just want to, um, let the public know, uh, this goes back to the recycling efforts in the city. Uh, as, as you know, waste management does audits and, um, uh, of our recycling efforts, um, we will be producing, uh, the latest audit for the council, but there'll be another one happening. Let me just say that during the pandemic, it's been a challenge, both with everybody being home and the amount of trash and recycling. We haven't exactly, uh, done a great job. And what that translates to is more money, uh, for the city if we aren't properly recycling. So, uh, you know, the audit is an ongoing situation. We'll, we'll have more information, but I just urge people at home to please, please recycle, look at your recycle bin and what should go into recycling in the green bins and take care to make sure you're not putting recycling, uh, non-recyclable materials in that green bin because in the end it's going to cost everybody a lot more money. So, uh, we'll, we'll bring the report that the last audit showed. Uh, as I said, the pandemic has been really tough on this, uh, and it's going to result in a lot more money that the city's going to have to pay. So, uh, we're going to try and do our best to again, re-double down and, and educate people to please, please, please recycle, uh, and make sure you're careful about putting stuff into the green bin. And then secondly, I just wanted to let the public know that tomorrow is, right now it's our last day of the Stop the Spread campaign here in the city of Lowell. Um, we, uh, that means free testing for the coronavirus out at one thousand one Pawtucket Boulevard, Cross River Center. Um, it's free. You don't need an appointment. It will be from ten AM to six PM. Uh, you don't need symptoms. Uh, you just, you can pre-register, but you don't have to. Um, right now, because our positivity rate has remained low, um, the, um, state has said that, that this will be the last, uh, day that we'll be having this in Lowell. However, there will be other cities, uh, and we'll make sure we get that list of cities that people want to go to those other cities. If, if the positivity rate changes, they may decide that they will, um, reinstitute Stop the Spread here in Lowell. But, uh, this, these tests are free. They're being paid for by the state. Uh, so I just want to let people know if they are interested tomorrow, well, right now it looks like it'll be the last day in Lowell. So, uh, ten to six, one thousand and one Pawtucket Boulevard.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just on the recycling, Madam Manager, as part of that report, could you, um, provide the number of citations that have been issued? And I, I appreciate the fact that we've, um, kind of continued with the information and education outreach, but quite frankly, I feel, um, you know, this, this passion in the city is running a huge deficit. Uh, as you know, I look, you know, including the budget this year, it's about eight, close to eight hundred thousand. So those people that aren't, uh, recycling, they're costing us more. It's already running a deficit. And I feel while you don't want to penalize people, we, those, those of us that do recycle are getting penalized from those individuals that are dumping. So I think we have to, um, increase our enforcement efforts, quite frankly, because this is, it's been going on for quite some, we've been recycling, we've had a recycling program for a long enough period. And unfortunately, if, you know, until people get a citation, then, you know, um, maybe they'll start caught, you know, being more conscious about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rock?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, to, to Counselor Elliott's point, it's costing the city not just a little bit of money, a lot of money. I actually had the idea a few years ago to see if we could expand the recycle program to two barrels for household. Um, and that made no sense back then. You know, I wonder if it's time, Madam Manager, just to, you know, severely restrict recycling to things that are extremely obvious and things that can be recycled, whether it's newspaper or cardboard and everything else, people just throw away the trash. Um, you know, that way at least, you know, we're not losing money and we are getting some recycling in and maybe something we could think about. Um, but we're kind of biting off our noses despite the face, right? Because, um, we're trying to do the right thing, but it's not working. So, you know, how do we get to a point where we can still, uh, recycle a much higher percentage than we're at right now? And I'm sure if you're going back over the last, what, five to ten years, that was, don't get any better, right? Uh, so, you know, if there's a way that, you know, we just maybe take, you know, with, again, paper or cotton, whatever it could be, you know, a couple of, uh, of, uh, items and that's it, it may be something worth thinking about. Thank you.
Thank you. We, and we'll look at alternatives. I mean, part of the, it, it, it is a problem. People are treating it like an extra trash barrel and that's where we get into, you know, the, the contamination, uh, and whether we, you know, resort to telling people we won't pick up your recycling, we're just not going to pick it up because you're violating, you know, the rules. Um, but I, but I agree, it's getting to a point that it's just not sustainable.
You know, you can put big cans of wine bottles on the list, Madam Manager, I'm sure that I follow that every week, right?
Thank you. I gotta say that the pamphlet I got in the mail this week was done very well. Um, explained everything, so that was a good, uh, a good mailing. Um, sure, Counselor Elliott?
I just had a question. It's, um, not an announcement. Madam Manager, um, the hours at City Hall, are they going to remain? Is it still, or, I mean, I have to say, a fair amount of folks have asked me, is it still just Tuesday and Thursday and Tuesday nights? Is that going to change anytime soon to?
There hasn't been a determination yet, Counsel. We are looking at that, but right, right now those are the hours, but we, we will keep you posted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then one further, um, discussion we have to have. Um, so last week we asked for an opinion from the health, um, services and we, we had to make a decision if we were going to come back in or keep doing the Zoom meetings. So, uh, did everybody get a chance to read their opinion? Counselor Samaras, did you have something? You're on mute.
Could you, could you review the opinion, the opinion? Did we get it? Oh, I didn't get a copy.
It shouldn't, it was in the packet, right, Madam Manager?
I, I looked it.
Yeah, it was separate, but it was in the packet. It should have been.
Uh, yeah. In essence, uh, I don't know. But, um.
Somebody not muted. Okay, go ahead, Madam Manager. Thank you.
Uh, we, we did put, um, a, a, a advisory in the packet. Um, we, we were asked to, uh, seek an opinion from the Health Director, Joanne Belanger. In short, um, uh, the, the advisory, um, talked about that, um, the, um, you know, COVID, what the COVID rates had been, uh, in the transmission rates. Um, according to Joanne Belanger, um, she was advising that if it's feasible to conduct the business, um, by Zoom, that, uh, city board should continue to do so or meet remotely. That's just her opinion. Um, and that's, um, pretty much, she said she would continue to update regarding assessments and recommendations. Um, she, um, said in the opinion that, uh, for several weeks, the city had been green, um, which means, um, that had a lowest, low, lower risk of, for, uh, in the community. Um, but that last week, that risk went to yellow. Um, and, um, that was based on the, um, number of cases per one hundred thousand residents. And so it was elevated to yellow when the number of cases per one hundred thousand residents over a fourteen-day look back reached four point two cases. And the, the cutoff is four point oh. That's, it was green before because we were below the four point oh.
Thank you. I mean, we, um, we are meeting in the chambers of the school committee. We're all trying to be, uh, responsible as far as if we are going to continue with school committee meetings, um, then we limit our exposure outside of, uh, city government. Um, we do have the tables and the, and the desks separated. We have, uh, the windows open and it's disinfected, um, and cleaned and, and all that. So, but, um, we did have a, a question, um, from a few councils if we were returning or if we're going to keep doing the Zooming. So I don't know what the wish of the body is, Counselor Mars, uh, Counselor Samaras, and then Counselor Chow.
Oh, thank you. Actually, I want to thank my fellow counselors, you know, for the support, you know, over the past few months, uh, of having the meetings that are zoomed in. I did some research of my own, but I can understand the desire to get back, uh, to the meetings. But I would just, you know, let people know that if you're thinking of like Boston, Cambridge, Newton, Somerville, they're online. Uh, a majority of the communities are online, but you, you look at Lawrence Springfield online, you look at, uh, Brighton, open, closed, uh, Methuen, open, uh, the close to the public, Havel, open but close to the public. So my only suggestion would, would be if there is a desire to, uh, go back, is that the meetings remain closed. I mean, that's, I don't know of any community, uh, in the Commonwealth, the majority are still doing it by Zoom, but the thing is, uh, I believe almost all of them, if not, uh, at least like ninety, whoop, ninety-six percent, uh, the meetings are closed, you know, to the public at this particular point. So that's my only suggestion.
And that's the way we do, do the, Counsel, the school committee meetings. Yeah. Uh, somebody else have their hand up, Counselor Chow?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, the, the report and recommendation was good and I respect all the, uh, counselors' concern about the health and safety of all, um, our colleagues and of course the city. Um, just, just a question, um, that recommendation based on, uh, two options, whether to go remote or, um, to everybody go inside the chamber, was, was there a third option? I thought we talked about third option of having hybrid, um, counselors who would like to go in, um, they can, and counselors who can do it, uh, remotely, they can? Was that something that an LTC can explore for us or what?
Yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't, um, for Joanne Belanger, but, uh, LTC can, let me just, um, say, LTC, uh, uh, in, in MIS has looked at, um, having, uh, not just, uh, a counselor, but public, uh, Zoom to participate in the meeting and that can be accomplished. So, uh, you could have a meeting in person and the two screens on the side of the, um, chamber would be utilized for anybody who wanted to be present on Zoom. Uh, and that would not require, um, a, a delay or, uh, a break between what was happening live and what was happening on Zoom, according to Moran Fernandez.
Okay, thank you. Um, Counselor, uh, Noon and then Counselor Rock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this city council has always been wise when, you know, to listen actually to experts, either from the police, the fire, but in these cases, uh, Health Director, um, and, uh, Health Directors, um, Director Valentia says advisors based on the recent, uh, COVID nineteen report. And it was indicated that as, in, as, uh, 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 highlighted by the managers that elevated the, the rate from green, which is a low risk to a high risk, will higher than green, which is a yellow risk. And, and, I mean, if you look at the third paragraph of her report or recommendation, she said, you know, she heard that we could do to meet remotely at this time. You know, I'm, I'm fine if the, the, the body, uh, choose to go in person, I'm fine too. But I just want us to really caution us to, I mean, really, we have an expert and we, we probably have to listen to that expert. And if we go back in, I, I agree with the suggestions that we ought to have it close to public if we can do that, like the school committee. That's all my input on that instantly. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rock?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, after hearing from Counselor Samaras and Counselor Noon, uh, and their, um, willingness to go back to the, uh, chambers, um, and to run the way a school committee is run, I'll make a motion that we return to the council chambers, uh, for the September twenty-second meeting.
Is there a second? Counselor Mars?
I will second it.
Okay. Um, all right. I got a counsel, I got a second from Counselor Mars here first, though. Thank you. So do we need a roll call? Do you want to roll call on it or should we just all? Counselor Conway, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to weigh in before we, um, before we vote on that, if it's all right. On, on this vote here, are we talking about, uh, coming into the chambers, but the meeting to be close to the public? Is that correct?
Yes, and then we'll figure a way, either Zoom or phone call to get the public into the meeting.
Okay.
And then I don't know, I mean, are we going back to weekly meetings come October or do, how do we leave that? Because I think if we do meet weekly, the meetings will be shorter. Um, obviously when we meet every two weeks, they're longer. So why don't we mo- vote on the motion and I, I, sure.
By council rules, the, the summer schedule will be off at the end of September. If, if there's no action, it will automatically go to weekly, uh, meetings starting the month of October. There's no action that would be needed unless the action was to meet twice a month.
Okay.
I think that, uh, uh, you know, going along with, uh, with, um, Counselor Samaras mentioned, uh, I, I also respect the fact that the city council, um, has, has voted to do the, the Zoom, uh, because I think it, needless to say, it is a, a safer way of doing things. I've talked to my doctor too and, and, uh, she said to me that it's, uh, if you can do Zoom, it, it makes a lot more sense. And again, we always talk about following the, um, you know, the, the, the information, uh, that we get from medical people. Uh, and, you know, and I understand why people want to go back to the chambers. I, I, I get that. But I think we have to be very, very cautious when we go back too. Uh, and again, have the, these meetings closed as we've talked about. I think it's extremely important. Also, I think the ventilation in there, uh, I mean, I, I know, you know, I, to try to open those windows there, I, they're like almost impossible to open. So, uh, I really think that we, uh, uh, I think we have to take a look at the environment that we're, that we're going to be working in because we've talked about the schools, making them safer. I think the environment that we're in, I think we need to make that as safe as we possibly can too. And then one other thing I'd like to caution is that I think that, um, you know, we have to use, uh, you know, we have to use good practice here. If we find that there is a, um, an uptick in the city and it is causing an issue and a problem, I think we have to be very, very cautious of that and perhaps even, uh, go back to the Zoom. It depends. I mean, we see what happens in the colleges now that there are actually, you know, five hundred and a thousand a week cases that are coming in. So I have no idea what, what's going to take place once the, the schools open up. As I said earlier, we have be, we have approximately fifty thousand people that are going to be circulating in a much closer environment through these three schools and then going back into another environment at home. So I think we have to be aware of that and be flexible going forward. So again, I'll, I'll support, uh, Counselor Rock's motion, but again, we have to be flexible, um, if, if there is an issue going forward.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to assure you that, that at the school committee, we are able to open the windows. I know a couple of windows are tough, but the windows do, are open, the place is clean, um, the filters, I'll double check on those. The filters, I'll double check on those, but I'm assuming those are clean. We got the air conditioning going, got the windows open. And like I said, there's Lysol there. We wear our masks coming into the meeting.
Can you, can you, can you open the windows at, at Central?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I understand someone, it was tested positive over in Central. Is that correct?
In Central, I haven't heard. I knew there was someone.
Administration, you haven't heard anything about that?
No, at Lowell High I did, but not.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about, I'm talking about Central Administration. You haven't heard anything on that?
No.
Okay. Well, I think it might be something you take a look at because I've heard it from a number of sources. Okay?
Okay. Counselor Elliott?
Look, the question.
Okay. What was the question? Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Daley? Counselor Mercy?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rock?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Reluctant, yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
That's nine yeas. Okay, thank you. Counselor Elliott?
In light of the fact that we are going back to minimize any exposure, I'd like to, I'd make a motion that we continue with the every other week following beginning in October.
Motion to continue that summer, summer schedule, I think?
Correct.
Second by who?
I second that.
All right. And let me just ask one question. So tonight was two and a half hours. Do you think it'd be quicker to go every week though, so we wouldn't be in the chambers that long? Or this is good to stay every other week? I'm just trying to think about the time in the chambers, which doesn't bother me, but might bother other councils. So Counselor Samaras? You got it unmute, Phil? Yeah.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, but I think there's one thing we have to realize. Sometimes we'll, we'll look at our agenda and we'll say this meeting will last a half an hour. And it goes three to four hours. So sometimes that, the amount of information doesn't really speak to how long the meeting will go to. I, I would like to support Counselor Elliott's motion. I think it's a good motion. It gives us a chance to be prepared, but it's, it's, it's really an extra hour versus another day. I would be much happier with the, I think it's a well-thought-out suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion before the vote? Roll call? Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Lady?
Yes.
Counselor Mercy?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rock?
Yes.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Nine yeas. Okay, thank you. Motion adjourned by Counselor Drinkwater, seconded by Counselor Rock. Thank you, everybody.